Good evening, welcome to your city council meeting. And we are coming back from a closed session. We will be returning to closed session after we close this session because we still have more to talk about. Jody, you didn't tell me what to say, so am I supposed to say the usual thing?
(inaudible)
No, I didn't say that. And we had no reportable action. Okay? Yeah. So if you want to find out if we're going to report something, you can come back around midnight and we'll let you know how we're doing. I guess I'm compelled to say one thing about it. There have been a lot of discussion in the community about Lompoc Housing Community Development Corporation and, you know, is the council actually doing something? I can't even count how manyth session this is with regard to that. And it's an extremely complicated problem. And we're, through our city staff, we're working on it diligently. I was happy to see that the county finally took a look at it the other day, too. So just know that we're not just sitting by. We're all deeply involved and concerned. And moving right along, we have our invocation from Pastor Darren Hunt.
God, tonight we come to you mindful that we're just over a week away from many of us who will gather around tables with family, with friends, God, giving thanks, Lord, remembering what happened hundreds of years ago, God, as this nation was formed and got out of hardship and out of trouble, a group came together and gave thanks, Lord. So as we start this meeting and as we invokeate, asking you for your help, God, I pause and I give you thanks. Lord, I thank you that we live in such a great nation, God. I thank you that we live in such a great city, Lord. God, we give thanks, Lord, as we'll celebrate, as we'll eat food that maybe is hard fought these days, God, maybe it comes easily, maybe it comes at the hand of others, God, but I thank you that there is provision for us, Lord. As we look at what our budget has, what our city has, Lord, I give you thanks that we don't look at worse numbers than we look at today, God. I give you thanks, Lord, as I look around this city, God, I see doors that are closed, but I thank you there's not more than that, God. I thank you that we have citizens that desire to have a good city. I thank you for elected officials, God, who don't serve to make a name for themselves, but serve, I believe, God, truly, to serve as citizens of this city, God. I pray that you would give them your wisdom, give them your strength tonight, God, I pray not only this night, but each day, as they report and as they decide on the best course of action, God, I pray that you would give them that wisdom, that strength to do the best that they can. God, give them their strength. Be with us tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Coming forward, we have some presentations. And, are you going to read the proclamation again? Absolutely. Councilmember Martner will read a proclamation.
Whereas Mrs. Elizabeth Emily Gidney-Christensen, known to us, to all of us, as Beth Christensen, was born in Orchard, Washington on September 8, 1916. Whereas Beth graduated from Vancouver High School in 1932 and enrolled as a member of the class of Clark College Vancouver, where she met the love of her life, Harold Hal Christensen. And whereas, concerned the young lovers were getting far too serious, given the economic reality of the Great Depression, Beth's mother insisted the relationship end. And whereas Beth taught at the Washington State School for the Blind, assisted at a weekly newspaper and print shop, and worked at the Kaiser Vancouver Shipyard during World War II. And whereas, in 1946, Beth began working for Random House Publishers, reading periodicals in search of new words, new usages, and variant spellings, and stayed with it until 1985. And whereas, in 1947, Beth returned to Vancouver, traveling by tramp steamer through the Panama Canal. In August 1948, she and Hal reunited and were married. They immediately set off for Hal's new Air Force Duty Station in New Jersey. And whereas Beth traveled far and wide with Hal during his Air Force career, they first lived in Lompoc in 1964. Hal's work eventually took them elsewhere, but they returned and retired, quote unquote, in 1975. And whereas Beth served on the Lompoc General Plan Advisory Committee, and she was a founding member of the Lompoc Valley Botanical and Horticultural Society, she was a past member of the boards of the Lompoc Democratic Club, now Lompoc Museum, and the Lompoc Library Foundation. Beth served on the Lompoc City Blue Ribbon Committee and on the City Water and Utilities Commission. And whereas Beth helped educate many Lompoc residents on the rich history of our community. And whereas Beth was not afraid to get up and tell elected officials they were wrong, but with such civility that they often thanked her and sometimes changed their former position. And whereas Beth was respected by all for her wit, research, and writing skills, intelligence, and her community activist efforts. Now therefore, I, John Lynn of the City of Lompoc, on behalf of the city council and other area residents, do hereby honor Beth Christensen as an outstanding member of our community and recognize her as an extraordinary human being. I will be keeping this proclamation until Beth's daughter returns to Lompoc in the spring, where we will be having a memorial to remember Beth.
Thank you very much. And now, the Lompoc Aquatic Center Annual Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council, staff, members of the public here tonight and our audience at home. Tonight, I am here to present the Lompoc Aquatic Center Annual Report. This is an information-only item, requires no action by council. This report outlines the expenses, the revenues, the programs, and the population served at the Aquatic Center for fiscal year 2010, 2011. As you know, the Aquatic Center had held its grand opening in October of 2006, just celebrating our five-year anniversary last month. And over these past five years, recreation staff have developed a menu of programs that are aligned with our mission statement, which is to improve the quality of life in the community by promoting positive social behavior, interaction with others, self-discovery, and positive self-esteem through the development, implementation, and coordination of a wide variety of recreation and cultural services. Each year, Recreation Division staff reviews and evaluates program fees and offerings, and our most recent adjustment to program fees was made in July of 2009. At that time, there were implemented fee increases, program adjustments, and an annual facility closure for the Aquatic Center in an effort to reduce the subsidy the facility receives from the general fund. In the past fiscal year, the facility had 104,938 visitors through the doors. This is a consumer occupancy increase of 17% over last year's 89,643 patrons. These individuals utilized the facility for programs such as recreation swim, lap swim, swim lessons, water exercise classes, party rentals, and other special uses. Just an example, over the last year, we offered at the facility 348 swim lessons that had 1,898 participants, 24 warm water therapy classes with 588 participants, 342 hours of recreation swim, 1,792.75 hours of lap swim. 68 individuals took advantage of private and semi-private swim lessons. 96 adults took on the challenge to learn how to swim, as well as many of our special events like the triathlon, the junior triathlon, the cardboard boat float, and more. Over the past year, our aquatic staff have trained 110 patrons in various certifying programs such as CPR for the Professional Rescuer, lifeguard training, lifeguard training instructor, and water safety instructor. As you know, the facility is home to the Tsunami Swim Team, the Lompoc and Cabrillo High Schools Boys and Girls Water Polo and Swim Teams. Combined, these teams have utilized 2,279 hours of rental time in the water. The facility also is a training location for many local organizations such as California State Parks Department, American Red Cross, our local scuba diving club and business here in town, and other rescue-related services. Our private rental program for our recreation pool is extremely popular, and this last year, that facility had 171 private rentals. Our program registration and facility booking system allows us to collect data on our clients, and that data shows us that 26% of our customers in swim lessons and water exercise classes come from outside the city limits, of which 6% travel from the San Inez and the Santa Maria areas. Additionally, 46% of individuals that rent the facility for private use reside within the 93436 ZIP code. That includes the city limits, Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills area, while 7% traveled from Vandenberg Air Force Base, 25% from the Santa Maria area, and 13% were from the San Inez Valley. This past fiscal year, 9% of our total rentals traveled from as far north as San Luis Obispo and as far south as Santa Barbara. In this last fiscal year, 2010, 2011, the Aquatic Center generated $303,689 in revenue through programs such as our swim lessons, water exercise, recreation swim, pool rentals, lap swim, and specially aquatic programs. This is a revenue increase of $18,044 over the previous year. In the city's efforts to recover costs for recreation services, all programs and services at the Aquatic Center are assigned a user fee. Those user fees paid for all program services offered at the Aquatic Center. The total cost of the facility operations during this past fiscal year was $303,355. This includes utilities, permits, inspections, chemicals, custodial, maintenance, and a percentage of the recreation supervisor. It is important to note that facility operation costs this fiscal year experienced an increase of $19,850 due to utility rate increases, of which $10,460 are related to City of Lompoc utilities. Due to the 2010, 2011 revenue increase, along with the modifications to operations at the Aquatic Center, the operating budget required $23,485 less in general fund subsidy than budgeted for the 2010, 2011 year. Throughout this fiscal year, the Recreation Division has had the exciting Splash Pass as a convenient and affordable option for our families, couples, and individuals that utilize the Aquatic Center on a regular basis for classes, recreation swim, and lap swim. This program has allowed users to pay a monthly fee for unlimited access to those lessons, classes, and recreation and/or lap swim, and has been very popular. Currently on the books, we have nearly 200 family accounts taking advantage of this opportunity. The goal of the Splash Pass is to allow patrons the affordable option when registering for lessons or attending recreation swim. If they are a Splash Pass holder and they want to register for classes, they give us a call, identify themselves as a Splash Pass holder, and we take care of it from there. The Aquatic Center continues to be a valuable asset to our community, attracting customers from many of our neighboring communities and providing a great service to our Lompoc residents. Through the continuation of the program such as the Splash Pass and the introduction of new and creative events, we remain confident that our patronage and revenues will continue to increase. It's important to note that we, as program providers, assess our operations and programs on a regular basis for all our programs, including that at the Aquatic Center. Our first quarter financials for the current fiscal year for 2011, 2012 indicate an increase in revenues from that of last year during the same time period of $29,072, with expenditures remaining constant. The new addition of the dehumidification system activated in October of this year, staff continue to explore the opportunity to expand program opportunities during cooler weather as they are supported by our customers. Through the diverse program offerings and continuous program refinement and excellent customer care, the Recreation Division has created a popular program that continues to thrive in our community. And I brought some slides to share with you tonight. Stacy has them to be handing out, and there are some copies in the lobby for the audience if you did not receive one coming in. Just to give you, our report tonight was on the last fiscal year, but just to give you a five-year comparison of where we've been, where we are, and where we're planning to go, we thought it was important to show you. As we opened the doors at the Aquatic Center, our lap swim hours, we had 1,900 hours of lap swim offered to our community. As programs were not supported, we backed down those hours a little bit in the second year to 1,712 hours. And then through the adjustments made in the 2009, 2010 budget year, those numbers dropped down to 1,276 hours. Last year, because our customers came back and have been supporting the programs, and we've also been listening to our customers and making adjustments to the services that we offer, last year we were able to offer nearly 1,800 hours of lap swim services. And this year, with the adjustments that we're making with the new dehumidification system, on track to finish out this current fiscal year, we're at 2,191 and a half hours to be offered to our citizens this fiscal year. On the recreation swim time, we opened the doors with a full swing in effect, and as programs were not supported and recreation swim did not see high attendance, we reduced those hours in the second year to 469. Drastic reductions because, once again, it was not supported, we backed down the hours to 240 hours in 2009, 2010. And last year, we were able to add additional hours, and we had 342 hours this past fiscal year. And again, with the dehumidification system, we're able to bring back what was once popular as a family swim night at the Aquatic Center. In the summertime, we offer those at least twice a week, and during the school year, we're still trying to figure out what nights are going to work best for our customer base. The next slide will show you, oh, I have the button, sorry. Power. Okay. So the next slide shows you a five-year comparison of our swim lessons, our fitness exercise classes, that includes also our warm water therapy classes, oh, I'm sorry, it does not include our warm water therapy classes, those are separate, and then our private lesson program. Again, you see, as the doors open, we started out in full swing. Our consumers had a very small menu of group swim lessons when the municipal pool was first closed. There was a little bit of offerings in the summertime, so group lessons were a new thing for our customers, really, so a lot of them headed right to the private lessons in the very beginning. As program modifications shifted and changed, and the consumers supported the services, we made adjustments, and you can see that we dropped down our swim lesson offerings from 400 offerings in a year to 274, to 284, up this year to 348. And our current projections this year is 422. I'm happy to report that our fall swim lessons, this last fall season, the current fall season that we're in, we have seen a 27% increase in patronage in our swim lesson program, and that's just for our fall season, so we're very excited. We've made some modifications, and our customers seem to really enjoy those. In our fitness classes, we saw a similar trend. We started out with 67 classes, lowered that down to 47, made more adjustments to 25, raising the minimum number of students in order to keep a class happening in the water. Last year, we were able to squeak that back up to 30. And again, with the dehumidification system, we're able to bring back some of those early morning water exercise classes and later in the evening exercise and fitness courses. The therapy classes, the same thing. We went from 42 to 30, 22, 24, and next year, we're, in this current fiscal year, we're looking at about 30. And today, I was actually in discussions with the Arthritis Foundation, and we're working on some collaborative opportunities, and that came through at 4 o'clock this afternoon. Our private swim lessons, as I mentioned, started out strong. We offered 200 private swim lessons the first year we were open, backed that down to 100. And in 2009, 2010, the fee was raised for our private and semi-private swim lesson, and the consumers backed down as well, down to 72. This last fiscal year, we saw the trend turn from our private program to our lesson program, which is more cost-effective for us to operate and shows us a greater revenue base, so we like our customers in our group lessons. And that went down to 68, or went up to, down 68. And then this year, we are anticipating an increase because as the kids are participating in swim lessons, you also see the dehumidification system allows those parents to take advantage of some private swim lessons later in the evening hours as well. The next slide talks about the general fund and our subsidy data at the Aquatic Center. 2007, 2008 was our first full fiscal year of operations at the Aquatic Center. Our allocation for general fund dollars was $399,412. We actually needed, in order to close the gap with expenses, $412,828. Modifications were made, and we were allocated for the second year $354,239, and we were only needed to close the gap $350,553. The following year, our subsidy was reduced again, and it was allocated at $293,364, and we came in at $267,539. This fiscal year, we were allocated again, $293,364. We came in at $269,879 in order to close the gap. And in closing that gap, that gap also includes that additional $19,850 that we experienced in rate increases in utilities last year. The next slide is a little picture to show you our actual expenses versus our revenues. You'll see that in 2007, 2008, the total operations was $692,968, and 59.6% of that came from the general fund. The next year, our expenses were reduced, but still $646,458, and our general fund subsidy was reduced at 54.2%. The next year, our total expense was $553,184, and the amount of percentage of subsidy needed was 48.3%. This last year, our total expenses were $573,568, and the percentage of subsidy needed was 47.1%. If you look on the bottom on the chart of this slide, you'll see the program revenue steadily increased. The first year at $280,140, the second year $295,905. The third year was $285,645, and that was the year that we saw a decrease in services being offered, as well as a decrease in attendance, and we attributed that to the increase in fees and the reduction of services. And this last fiscal year, $303,689. So currently, in the 2010, 2011 fiscal year, the facility cost recovered itself at 52.9%. The last slide is a slide that we're very proud of, and that is, we're actually very proud of all the slides, I'm going to clarify, but this one really makes a statement to show, oh, I didn't change it, sorry. This one really makes a statement to show that, the slides before show that progression. We are continuing to make improvements, we're continuing to make adjustments, we're listening to our customers, and we're trying to determine what our customer needs, we're gathering their input, and we're here to serve our customers, and we've been doing that, and we've been making dents in the budget. This first quarter summary was so unique when we saw it that we wanted to make sure that you saw it, and we ran the numbers backwards and forwards and doubled and triple-checked everything we had, and they are accurate. Our operational expense from July 1, 2010, to September 30, 2011, was $151,610. Our current expense for the same timeframe is $149,182. Our general fund subsidy needed if we were to close the books after a quarter of the year for last year was $57,818. This year, if we had to close the books this past September 30, we would have only required $26,344 of the general fund. And that is attributed to the revenue increase that we saw last year, same timeframe. We brought in $93,766, and this year, we were at $122,838. So our first quarter revenues are showing an increase of $29,072, and we're very happy. So that's all the slides that I have for you this evening. That's all I have in my report. I'm available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Good evening, Ms. Palmer.
Good evening.
You know, I have a thing with pools. I just, I have to say, thank you for gaining the $18,000 there. I mean, it's always good when you strive for self-sustainment. I do have a couple of questions. One of them was, do parents have to pay to watch their kids swim?
For public swim, for recreation swim, yes. For swim lessons, no. And the reason that we did that was, when we first opened, we said, no, you didn't, we, we had an observation fee. And the observation fee, we were losing revenue, and it wasn't working, and in 2009, 2010, when we did a fee adjustment, it was decided to eliminate the observation fee.
Just curious, I wondered if it would work better without the observation fee and people could pay to bring their kids to swim. Something that doesn't show up here is, you know, that we have an assessment we're going to deal with later on, and a bond here. We're talking about a $1.7 million project that just completed. What are the plans for using the pool at night and during the inclement weathers and all that?
We are, our system was just turned on in October, so we're learning what that's doing for us. We are putting together our spring schedule right now that will encompass our program offerings from January through April. And included in that are some additional early morning classes, late evening classes, because we saw when we first opened, a lot of people wanted some of those early morning and late evening classes. They would come, we'd have to open the ceiling panels, it was really cold in there, and they stopped coming. So we're trying to bring some of those clients back. We're anticipating some adjustments to our lap swim times, as well as incorporating some evening public swim times to bring back our family swim opportunities.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thanks, Ms. Palmer, for your presentation. I have a few questions. The first is, of the approximate 105,000 visitors each year, are these unique visitors, or does this include repeat visitors?
It would include repeat visitors. And so anybody that walks through the front door outside of staff is counted.
Do we know the rate of repeat visitors? Has there been any analysis done as to how many unique visitors there are versus repeat visitors, and how often repeat visitors do attend?
No, because there's, right now, if you come in to pay for recreation swim, I don't gather your information, so I don't know if you come in once or five times during the summer, or if you come in during the day and then back again at night. It would be a challenge. We can track our repeat visitors for the classes that people register for and for those services in which we collect their data, to include our rental programs. We do have some repeat renters, but we also have some very unique renters.
Thank you. That's enough information for me on that. And, you know, one of the criticisms that I get all the time, and I'm not sure why, is what are the hours? So for once and for all, you know, in the public testimony, can you please tell us the hours of the Aquatic Center?
Well, now, that's a challenging question, because the hours of the Aquatic Center were open seven days a week, and the hours, we open as early as 5:45, three days a week in the morning, and we're open until 8:30 at night, some nights in the evening. So it just depends on what service the customer's looking for. All of our hours of operation are available on our website at citayoflompoc.com in our brochure. If you're looking just for recreation swim, which most people are looking for, currently we are open 1 to 3 on Saturdays and Sundays during the school year, and on Friday afternoons from 3:30 to 5:00. We, because we don't want to compete with football on Friday nights here in Lompoc. And then we'll be shifting that as the springtime hits. When the kids are out of school, we will be open. Every day the kids are out, we're open from 1 to 3. So for example, the kids were out on Veterans Day, we were open from 1 to 3 that day. The day after Thanksgiving, we'll be open from 1 to 3. I believe the kids are out also the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and we'll be open then as well. The facility will be shutting down on November 28 for the annual closure, but we are opening up early to, right after the New Year's holiday, so that we can still offer some recreation swim for the kids that are still out of school that first full week of January.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, we can understand why there's some confusion, and I'm not sure that... I'm not sure that that translates to lost revenue or not. You know, in some folks' opinion, it has. So that, again, would be something that I would urge you to focus on. I appreciate this, and I'm glad that we're seeing some incremental changes, lowering expense, you know, increasing revenue is, is great. Just keep working at it. You know, I know municipal pools really are having a tough time in this economy in multiple municipalities, and I'm glad that we can provide a subsidy. But of course, you know, the goal is to eventually make it self-sustaining. So I appreciate the work done. Let's continue to do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Plummer, you said there was no action to take on this, but I think there is some action. I just want to, on behalf of the council, really thank you and your staff for doing a wonderful job. I mean, it, we're going in the right direction, continue to do so. I, as councilmembers, I guess Costa mentioned, or no, maybe Starbuck, the night swims, now that we're able to use it because of the dehumidifier, definitely go after that. Is it the morning, the mornings and the evenings?
For exercise classes and lap swim, we're looking at early morning and, and evenings. For the recreation swim, we're looking at incorporating family swim times, which we do offer in the summertime, which we can expand thanks to the dehumidification system. The school year, it's a bit challenging to figure out what day is going to work and what days the community would support. We were trying to get that answer in a survey that we put out in our current brochure. We asked everybody to complete a survey in the back, and we'd give you a pass to come swimming for recreation swim. And we did get quite a few back, but nobody answered the question of, what more do you want to see at the Aquatic Center, something new, something different, and really trying to get that feedback. And we didn't have a lot of support on that particular question, but we're still talking with our clients, and we're leaning towards either a Friday or maybe choosing one day during the week to see again if the consumer would, would support it.
Okay, good. Well, again, thank you very much.
So this is your moment for a TV commercial, as most of Lompoc is watching you. Why don't you tell us what wonderful things this dehumidifier has done for the pool, so we all know why we spent the money?
The environment inside the Aquatic Center is absolutely amazing. I am so impressed with the system and what it's doing. Our clients that are using the facility, it's a little bit of a shell shock initially, if you're used to it being 50 or 60 degrees inside, but as they come in now, it's about 80 degrees. And if you're near the therapy pool where there's warmer water, the air temperature is warmer. As you walk towards the competition pool, where you have a more active athletic base, the actual air temperature gets to be a little bit cooler. Just like the water temperature decreases, so does the air temperature. And it took a little bit of adjusting in the beginning, but the great thing about this system is that, that week we had where it was 90 degrees and we all didn't know what to do, we were still able to open those ceiling panels and allow for that fresh, warm air to come into the facility. And then about 4:00, when the weather turns on us, we just shut those ceiling panels, and it's, it's beautiful. It's 80 degrees inside there right now, if you were to walk in there. It's absolutely amazing. We're working with a local artist to try to help us depict that image and that creation for our next brochure, so that we can help relaunch and remarket the Aquatic Center, to show that regardless of wind, snow, sleet, hail, whatever, it's 80 degrees in there, and it's absolutely beautiful. And you can run around in your bathing suit and shorts and have a, well, don't run on the deck, but you can walk around in your bathing suit and shorts and just have a great time.
And I think the other thing someone mentioned to me was, because the air is not so heavy, it's a lot more pleasant to breathe.
It is. It, it, we've taken the moisture out of the air, and we have a nice dry heat, and there's actually a circulation of air. So it's not like, if anybody has ever been to Fresno in the middle of the summer, and you open the door, and it feels like you walk into a brick oven, it's not that type of heat. It's a really nice heat with some airflow going through, through the vents. So you really, if you're sitting there on the sides watching your kids in swim lessons, as long as you don't have a parka on, you're not going to sweat. So you're sitting there in your street clothes, you're not going to start getting really hot. You're very comfortable and very pleasant.
Okeydoke. Thank you very much. Anyone else have a question? Nope. All right. Thank you very much. And good news on the, the first quarter number, it's actually amazing news.
Thank you.
So what that boils down to is a $120,000 revenue increase if the first quarter goes forward. Okay, let's see. And the City Administrator's Report.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, audience and viewers, the City Administrator's Status Report includes three updates on three city projects, the Dick DeWes Community and Senior Center, the Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidifier project, and the installation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Ocean Avenue, Ocean Avenue and R Street. And Senior Civil Engineer Mike Luther is available tonight to report on these city projects, and I would invite him to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to begin with the R signal, R Street signal on Ocean Avenue. Since the last report, the design consultant, MNS Engineers, has submitted their preliminary design to the Engineering Division, and we have returned comments the first week of November. So the next step will be MNS incorporating the comments from the Engineering Department, and then submitting to Caltrans for their first review. If there's any questions on that project, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
When, when's our estimated installation date, just in a general sense?
I, I mean, I'm guessing. I would say there's probably at least two more months of design and then bidding. So hopefully, next summer, it could actually be in construction.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Aquatic Center. You just heard from Joanne about the project. There's not a whole lot to report as far as construction. Like I reported last month, the project is essentially functional and complete as far as the city being able to use the project. There's still a roof screen that needs to be installed, we're waiting for the delivery of, and the contractor has been working on minor punch list items. If there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the senior center. So since the last update, we are still in negotiations with the contractor on the time extension request that he has in. And to date, no time extensions have been granted. So as of today, the project is 98 days beyond contract. And I am glad to announce that there has been significant progress on the work portion since last month. I don't know if you've driven by, but there are, the columns are up, the screen wall for the patio is nearing completion. Interior is, which you can't see by driving by, has made extensive progress. The contractor is pulling wires to all the outlets inside the building, so the conduits are in, now he's just pulling the wires. The drywall is about 85% complete. They're actually starting to prime rooms in the front of the building on the north end, and they are laying tile in two of the bathrooms currently. Since the last update, there, since I actually wrote this report, this report shows two change orders written, one for the dry rot that was discovered on the roof, and one for special inspection during the trust building down in Los Angeles. And, but there has also been two additional change orders written since, since this was written. One was for a, the fire line to the building had to be relocated when the fire sprinkler plan was submitted for approval. It needed to be relocated from the back of the building closer to the street. So a change order was written for that. And there was actually additional, this one's related to the trust work. When we originally began the trusses, if you remember back, it was on a conceptual design. We got a price from the contractor while the plans were making their way through the Building Department for final approval. There was actually additional bracing, stiffening, and beams required onsite, not on the trusses, to reinforce the, where the trusses mounted. So a change order was written for that. That was done on time and materials, and that ended up being $46,000. So to date, there have been $240,219 in change orders written, and the project is still currently under the approved budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Looks like they were putting stucco wire on now, maybe, on the front.
Yeah, they're getting ready to stucco, so they've, on both the north end and the east side of the building.
Starting to look like something. Any questions?
And they have, the storefronts are also in, they, they have plastic up there now, the glass is on order, but soon you'll have the storefronts completed also.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. What is the remaining fund balance for the budget, budgeted for change orders?
The original approved change order authority is $574,000, and we are currently at $240,000, so there's approximately $334,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, audience and viewers, at the closed session meeting of November 1st, City Council approved the issuance of a request for qualifications to identify a potential interim provider to operate shelter facility, the Mark's House in Lompoc. Interested providers were to submit responses to the city no later than 5:00 PM on November 14th. Two responses were received, Goods Samaritan Services and Victory Outreach. Previously approved by City Council, the City Human Services Commission will review the submitted responses on November 22nd to make a selection recommendation.
Okay. Oops. Next turn on your microphone. Next oral communications for all of you out there who would like to talk about something right now that might be on the agenda, or something that's not on the agenda.
Mary Lynn, members of the council staff, my name is Alice Milligan. I live in Lompoc. I'd like to talk about the properties that are currently owned by LH CDC, which the city has a financial interest in. It's unfortunate that this city council has had the unpleasant task to have to clean up this problem when it should have been handled many years ago. And I appreciate, appreciate the fact that this council has been diligently working on this issue, and I know it takes time because it's a very complex issue, and I appreciate the work that you've done on it. I feel that it's really important that the issue be resolved quickly and with care, welfare, and concern of the current renters in mind, as well as protection of city funds. It seems to me that it should be done expediently, so that current renters are not subjected to a lot of stress, wondering where they will be tomorrow, as well as, I mentioned, to protect the city monies that might be invested. Regarding the Lompoc Theater, which is a cornerstone of our downtown, I'd like to see the city exercise its deed of trust and turn it over to a nonprofit like possibly PCPA, although I doubt that they have the funds, but also to contact the Schumash, who may be interested in, in developing this facility. The Schumash have the expertise, pardon me, to turn this into a magnificent facility, plus they have the experience in scheduling events. A long-term lease would seem a logical solution. I'm told that the original sellers would be supportive of this idea, and would like to see the theater move forward as an entertainment center, which was originally planned. Insofar as the other properties where city monies are invested, these properties should go into a receivership, similar to what you did with the College Avenue Apartments, which were recently turned over to a new management group. And I'm pleased to see that you are soliciting RFPs for the Mark's House to make certain that it stays as a resource for Lompoc people, rather than go to another area. I think this would clear up this unfortunate problem soon, and then the council could proceed with the investigation as to what went wrong and how to make certain that the situation would not reoccur. But I know a lot of us in Lompoc, who are long-term members of this community, have a real concern that the theater remain in Lompoc downtown. It's a cornerstone of our community, and initially, the plan that was, originally the plan that was scheduled for the use of the theater was a very important one, and I, I found one that would have worked, but unfortunately, because of the economy, et cetera, it hasn't. But I'd like to see the council look into the possibility of exercising your deed of trust and making certain that it stays as a, a resource for our downtown. And I think that possibly a contact with the Schumash would, would be an important one to make, because I think they might have an interest, and certainly, they would do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dawn Michaels, and I live on Skyview in Lompoc. Five years ago, the Lompoc Aquatic Center opened for business. It was a long-awaited, beautiful facility for which all of Lompoc Valley could be proud. A previous council had asked voters to approve funding for this facility, and we did. Although the construction process was difficult and sometimes delayed, and although the project, projected costs rose, we now have this jewel for all to use. Rumblings and rumors began when the economy slumped and council had to look for spending cuts in the budget. As is often the case, recreation was first to be considered for the chopping block. There were, and are, no doubt are, strong feelings among the public as to the importance and necessity of continued public funding for recreational opportunities such as the Aquatic Center affords. As the staff report shows, belt tightening has resulted in greater revenues, increased usage, and less need for general fund subsidies. And although outside interests have shown interest in running the facility, city staff and employees have proven that there's no need for that now or in the foreseeable future. On behalf of myself and my family, and the diverse users of Lompoc Aquatic Center, I thank you, Council, for having the wisdom to give Joanne, Jeff, and the employees of the Aquatic Center the opportunity to show that the future of our recreational facility is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
My name is Judith Nielsen. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Recreation Department in total. I think we only need to read the Lompoc Parks Recreation Urban Forestry Bulletin that's available to recognize what a value to the citizens of Lompoc that we have in our Recreation Department and the programs that they offer. From passports to getting a new street treat, there's always a willingness to help the general public. From active older adult programs offered to special, offered to the Special Olympics, special events, and all the adult activities. In addition, we have youth and teen programs and sports listed also as the Urban Forestry Department in that booklet. They're available at the Aquatic Center and at the Recreation Department, provides all the hours, all the information that you need. I know I have a couple in my house that I refer to frequently. I should mention also that all of these departments and all of these programs are going forward, doing more with less in these economic times, as I'm sure you're well aware. And finally, we have the improved outlook on the Aquatic Center, which is encouraging. Where else can a family of four spend quality, active time together for the entrance fee for the pool? I don't think you can take a family of four to the movies for what it would cost you to spend an afternoon at the Aquatic Center. I cannot say enough either about the quality of the staff there. They're friendly, they're professional, they truly serve their mission statement well. We bought it, we continue to support it through our taxes. Do not, please, consider giving it away. The Recreation Department serves the people. The Y serves members. I have plans here to send you the minutes from the Channel Islands Association Board meeting indicating that the Lompoc YMCA has not been in good standing with memberships or with fundraising in 2010, or has the situation improved in 2011. I will send you these initial reports as they pertain specifically to Lompoc YMCA. on your, um, email. So that if you do not have the time to look all this information up for yourselves, I'd be happy to present it to you in a condensed form that represents really our best interests. Again, I'd like to compliment the staff on the wonderful job that they're doing there. I've taken advantage of it myself frequently, and I feel that it's a welcome relief and a, a nice sanctuary to spend an afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dave Schneider, and, uh, I'd just like to make a few comments tonight, uh, about the ongoing discussions pertaining to the possible involvement of the YMCA in, uh, in running the city's aquatic center. Uh, I personally swim regularly at the pool, and, um, I participate and pick up water pool games there each Wednesday night. Uh, I can say, uh, without a doubt, in the 40 years that I've been involved in aquatic sports, from my days back in the golden years at Cabrillo till, till the present day, uh, I've never had as nice a facility to utilize so close to my home. And, uh, based on, uh, the years I spent lifeguarding and maintaining pools down in Santa Barbara, uh, I worked at the Coral Casino across from the Biltmore, maintained the, uh, Samarcan Retirement Communities Facility, uh, worked quite a few years, uh, at the Los Spanios Del Mar City Pool down there, and also several years at the Santa Barbara YMCA. Based on that experience, uh, I don't believe that handing over control to, to another bureaucracy like the YMCA is going to be conducive to, uh, maintaining what I feel is a superlative level of service and programs that Joanne and Jeff and his fine staff have provided to the members of Lompoc's aquatic community. They're truly doing an outstanding job running and maintaining the aquatic center. And I'd like to close my comments tonight with, uh, an old adage that I'm sure everyone in this room has heard many times before, uh, and that I believe is applicable to this, uh, this decision. Uh, it's the old saying, uh, "If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and viewing audience. I'm Mary Saladino from Lompoc, and I just want to thank Joanne for her outstanding progress report. It shows great growth that is occurring each year. And anytime you have a facility that large with that much operation, you're going to have some bugs in the beginning, but those have been worked out, and it is our property taxes that supports that community. And I just have one question. If you should decide to let another entity take over the management of our aquatic center, who is going to be monitoring the administration of the progress and the reports there? And what would be the cost of someone else monitoring that, um, facility? And what would happen to it? Uh, currently, your staff, your paid staff is monitoring everything, and they report directly to you. And they are doing an outstanding job. I have attended the warm water classes there myself, and I really love it. I have not been able to come this month, but I will be there in December. And I hope all of you will have a chance to come sometime. It's really very nice. Very best way to do exercise, no strain on the joints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Darren Hunt, citizen of Lompoc. Uh, I just wanted to offer an apology to the mayor, the council, everyone on this dais, the citizens here, and those at home, to anyone I might have offended earlier in my invocation. It was my heart simply to pray a prayer of Thanksgiving and an invocation inviting God to, for His help. I had prepared in advance, although I didn't want to read a written prayer, and so I just prayed from my heart, and maybe my heart was still excited from swimming earlier at the Lompoc Aquatic Center with my girls today, as my one daughter prepares for her second swim meet. Uh, but at the conclusion of my prayer, I named a specific deity, and I wanted to apologize to anyone that was offended by that. I simply wanted to pray a prayer to God Almighty, and, uh, so it, I just wanted to say that and apologize, and if I need to remove myself from the, uh, roster, let me know. But, thank you.
Darren, you're a good and honest man, and all men make mistakes, and admitting them is what we do in life. Thank you.
Lady Mayor, members of the council, Ralph Harmon. Uh, I just want to add something on the aquatic center that, uh, we kind of tend to overlook, that, uh, the, the aquatic center is generating tax revenues that you kind of don't realize, that the, the people that are coming from out of town are also spending money here. And those, excuse me, and those revenues are being generated by that facility. So some of those, uh, funds that were being subsidized by the general fund are being replaced by, uh, tax money that are being generated by, uh, the users of the facility. So it's probably impossible to figure out what that is, but it needs to be factored in and kept in mind when we're, when we're talking subsidies. This, this is one facility that is starting to take care of itself, and I hope it'll continue that way, and I enjoy swimming there almost every day, so, thank you.
Thank you. I know our Economic Development Director appreciates the facility.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Mr. Mayor, I was glad to hear you mention in your remarks at the beginning of this meeting that the county had, uh, received information, uh, about Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation. I wanted to add to that, for the record, that the county has received information in two public sessions. Um, the first one occurred on October 18th. The second one occurred on November 1. Um, the, uh, November 1 hearing at the County Board of Supervisors was an update for all supervisors on the, um, LH CDC. It was revealed the amount of funds, total amount of funds, the dollar amount, that the county has invested in LH CDC properties. The county, uh, also released the potential liability to the county if affordable housing units were not kept in the affordable housing mix. That was 1.4 million. Uh, during that November 1 hearing, the county supervisors asked questions of their legal counsel, what their options were for each property that was, occurred in a public session. Only when the, only the option for Bridge House was the possibility of judicial foreclosure, that's when the county supervisors said that they needed to move that discussion into closed session. All, everything else occurred in open session. It was a nice reminder, listening to the words about Beth Christiansen and her civility. With all due respect and as much civility as I can master, muster, and master, come to think of it, I'd like to ask all of you to move some discussions about the facts for LH CDC, not your negotiating strategies, but the facts, the debt, the liabilities, to please move it into public session to increase the transparency that you're demonstrating to the community of, the residents of Lompoc. As I'm repeating myself, and I apologize, it's not all or nothing. You can present the equivalent of what the county presented to the public. The city should then be able to do the same thing, still retaining your negotiating strategies, uh, in private. So I thought I would, since we don't have that information out on the record, I thought I would share what I've put together to the best of my ability. I believe the city has invested 925,000 in the theater. It may be the first primary lien holder, first, it may have the first position, um, for the Mark's House. I believe the city is the first, has the first and second position, and the county holds the third position. Um, that includes CDBG and home funds. I, for Southern Court Apartments, I believe Citibank is the primary lender. I am not sure whether the city or the county is in second place because those were HUD funds or home funds which came through the county consortium, although they were for the city of Lompoc. For the J Apartments, I believe the city is in third position, I believe, I believe, based upon the data I've been able to pull together. Um, the amount owed may be about 245,000. There are private loans ahead of the city on the J Apartments. I believe on the Volker Apartments, the city is in second position. I believe the CDBG is approximately 131,000, uh, and a private individual holds the primary position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor, councilman, I'm just coming here to bring a couple of good things, too. I thought the presentation on the aquatic center is excellent, but the one thing Ralph Harmon brought up that we've got people coming from the outside, but when they come from the outside, they also spend money in town because they usually are buying something. And a lot of them from San Onofre come over to go to Michael's, and they go in there and buy there in Pier 1 because they're coming over, they don't have that facility. I've talked to, a lot of them come over and they, they rent it. Santa Maria comes, so they may buy a meal or something. So they also are spending money in town along with bringing their revenue into the area. So that's a real plus. Like any business, you always have a growing pains, and I think they've done an excellent job bringing it back. And I think that's a, a facility, as we talk about bringing people to town, we can say, "We've got a facility a second to none, and nobody else has one of that quality in Santa Barbara County." You gotta look at that as we advertise what we have to bring people to Lompoc, and it really does that. And another thing is that today, uh, in this chamber, this morning, the police department put on an excellent presentation. Uh, the chamber set the meeting up with the police department, when I was here, the, on how to take care of yourself, watch your business, and some very interesting facts that they were talking about for private sector in their business, and how do you make sure they don't get robbed, or somebody sneaks in the back door, make sure your doors are locked and others. So I thought that was a real plus for the area, the police department, and for the chamber, and for the council, knowing that the public is getting some education on, and a lot of businesses don't understand it, and I was real pleased to see it. In fact, uh, you had all, not only that, you had, you had both Channel 12 and Channel 6 here today making presentations, it was on the TV tonight, so, uh, showing that Lompoc is one step ahead and out there trying to take care of the business in town. So I, just two pluses.
Thank you, Dwayne. So it's too late, you can't take credit for that now.
Ken Austin, Lompoc Chamber of Commerce. Yes, Dwayne tried to steal some of my thunder, but that's okay, I'll get to that. Uh, some things going on within the chamber. Um, last week on the 3rd of November, I attended an agricultural town hall meeting in Apomo with Kachu Asatian. Um, the guest they had was the Secretary of California Department of Food and Agriculture, Karen Ross. There was about 200 folks from the agricultural community from Santa Louis and San, Santa Barbara Counties. It was mostly a question and answer period, which I thought was really good. Um, she didn't talk a lot, she, she listened and, and heard some of the concerns of, of folks in our agricultural community from both counties, and I think there's more to come with this, because there are some real concerns about some of the laws and regulations in California that are really hurting agriculture. So that was just to start in the first meeting, so. Uh, how many of you have heard of a stand-down? Some of you probably have. I attended a meeting in Santa Maria at Steve Levignino's office, the 5th District Supervisor. There's a stand-down. A stand-down is an organized committee that is there to help homeless veterans. Uh, I think the first one that was held was a huge one in San Diego about a year ago, it was featured on 60 Minutes. And, and Steve is putting together a committee to have one of these stand-downs, uh, held next October. And it's a big event where for one day, all the veterans within Santa Barbara County will come to the Fair Park in Santa Maria, and there'll be services provided there for them, mental health, legal services, job services, um, just a number of opportunities to help homeless veterans kind of get back on their feet, resolve some of the issues they're dealing with, and, and hopefully get them on the right track. So that's planned for next October, and I've attended the first meeting of that, so there's, there's more to come with that stand-down. So again, planned for October of, uh, 2012. Also attended the Economic Alliance for Northern Santa Barbara County on the 8th of November. I know the mayor and our Economic Development Director, Teresa Galavan, were there. Uh, oh, actually, yeah, you were there too, that's right, I'm sorry. I think some good information came from that, and, and I think some of that information will help us as we organize our own economic development committee here in Lompoc. Because a lot of that stuff that was gathered in Santa Maria is specifically Santa Maria, I think we really need to focus on Lompoc, but I think some of that information is good information to help us start along that process. As Dwayne tried to steal my thunder on the business forum that was held today, um, I think it was a good event. Wasn't very well attended particularly, and I thank the mayor for coming and opening up, making opening comments to that. Um, the police department was instrumental in, in, in putting this together. I called Chief Dabneo probably a month or two ago and, and mentioned this to him, and he just, he took it and ran. Actually, he took it and handed it off to Captain Ralston and Sergeant Lardner, who did a great job pulling that together. Uh, it was an excellent event. Uh, thanks to Stacy for helping with some of the things here at the City Council chambers. Um, we had fantastic coverage from KCOY and, uh, KSBY. I don't know if any of you saw the 6 o'clock news. We got about a minute on each one of those for this event today, so I think that was excellent. And John Cicada was here most of the day for the Lompoc record, so I'm sure we'll be hearing something in the, in the Lompoc record here in the near future about the event, but hopefully there's more to come. I, I hope that we can, um, can do some quarterly kinds of things to support our businesses in the community. That was just the first. So I'm hoping for more feedback from the business community on that. Uh, upcoming on Thursday, our chamber luncheon will be from 11:30 to 1:00 at Samantha's, and we will do our introduction of our youth leadership Lompoc Valley class for this year. Um, so anyone who hasn't signed up, you might still be able to sneak into that, um, but again, that's Thursday at 11:30. Uh, also, um, that evening, uh, a mixer, or as I call it, more networking, we have our, our mixer from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Lompoc Valley Florist here in Lompoc, so, and that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Councilmember Lingel. Ken, are you still looking for sponsors for the youth at that luncheon?
I, I think we're in pretty good shape, but you might want to just call and check tomorrow morning down to our office, but I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, how is this strategic plan going?
Well, the strategic plan is, is actually done, and we'll be meeting, our, our board will meet next week, and at that point, then, decisions will be made how we're going to disperse that.
So is it?
Up to my board.
Okay, so is at one point in time, uh, going to be a presentation that you may be giving to the council as far as what the strategic plan is?
Well, you know what, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if that's the plan. Again, my board will have to make that decision, you know, as how they want that done, and maybe just providing you guys a copy of that, I, again, I don't know that. That's, again, we, we meet, um, next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, for our board meeting, and that'll be a topic of discussion at that meeting.
You know, I would really appreciate if you can, uh, come to the council with a presentation on it, if you would like to pass that along as a request for at least, from at least one council member.
Right. Councilmember Starbuck, you got that right, because you're the liaison. All right. He'll be there.
He'll be there.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I think congratulations is in order. Um, you are now 75 bottles of wine richer, correct?
Yes, I am.
So he was, I just wanted to announce, um, that we're, I think that you should hit him up for dinner, because he has a lot of really nice wine, uh, that he won, so I want to say congratulations for being the raffle ticket winner by the Turducken Group there. That was great.
You know, it's interesting, when Mr. Councilmember Lingel delivered, there was only 60 bottles.
Oh.
Councilmember Starbuck? Did you have something to say before Councilmember Lingel got, you know, got in to say anything?
I didn't get the wine.
Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know what we're talking about, the local fundraising group, the Turduckens, they had a raffle. They raffled off seventy-five bottles of wine for seventy-five dollars a ticket, and all the proceeds went to the local library. All of the wines were donated, so there was, you know, no expenses involved. But the interesting thing, and again, a local supporter of this community, many of you or some of you know Steve and Kathy Pepe, the owners of Pepe Vineyards. I don't know how many tickets they bought for the raffle, but they're big, they're huge supporters of the library, so they probably bought a good number of tickets. So we're out there, we did it in the wine ghetto, we did the drawing in the wine ghetto for two reasons. We wanted to, you know, have a place where was, the wine was the environment, but also we wanted to help support the wine ghetto. And we had probably anywhere from twenty-five, maybe thirty people at any one time around us, eating snacks and buying a few tickets. But we went to draw the tickets. The ticket that was drawn was Steve Pepe's. Now, Steve owns a vineyard. He says, what am I going to do with seventy-five bottles of wine? So he says, no, I don't want it. He was just, he really just bought the tickets to support the library. So we took the ticket out and we threw it away. We went to draw a second ticket. Second ticket was Steve Pepe's. He said, no, 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 you know, throw it, throw it away. He doesn't want the wine, he was just supporting the library. So the third ticket then was Mr. Ostini's, and it was well deserved, Ken. I mean, I think Ken must have bought a hundred or so tickets, didn't you?
Oh, at least.
Yeah. No, no, so congratulations. But it was, it was a great fundraiser. We raised probably six or, well, about $6,000, $6,500 for the library. When we have the final count, we'll come to the council and let you know. So it was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
You know, going down that wine road, the mayor's ball at the, put on by the United Way for the reading programs in elementary schools, they asked all of us to come up with a unique gift. And Chief Dabney wouldn't let me raffle off shooting the machine gun, so we, we went out and asked fourteen wineries for one bottle. And so we had, including one hand-signed bottle, we had fourteen bottles of wine, and I caused the auction bid to be quite high and won, and then I actually let the number-two person buy it for their bid, which was twenty bucks less, so we did really well with that, too, and thanks to all the wineries that contributed. We have the consent calendar, we have approval of amendments, and we have approval of expenditures, and I will be abstaining from check number 301767 with, with, yeah, because I consult with them. I'm all right. Smitty's towing, yeah. And then we have approval of cooperative purchasing agreement from King County, Washington, for video systems for buses and authorizations to issue a purchase order for the video systems from Apollo Video Technology. Guess Washington got the best price. Adopt Ordinance Number 1579 Bracket 11, amending Lompoc Municipal Code Subsection 4.04.090A and E relating to the membership of the Airport Commission. That's the second reading. And that's it. Are there any items that a council member would like to have pulled? Councilmember Starbuck.
I wouldn't want to pull an item, but Mr. Fermba, I just had a couple of really quick questions when I went through the purchasing agreement here. The one thing that I was curious about in the staff report here, who's going to monitor these? Is this city monitoring these, or is this going to be the bus contractor's store that's going to do this, monitoring of the cameras and the GPS?
Both of us.
Both of us?
Yes, we'll actually be able to access them from the computers in our office on an actual-time basis.
The other question I had was, it says in here that this could turn into a savings to us based on the fact that it'll be a lot less time investigating complaints. When you look at the final price on the item, I'm just wondering, how many complaints are we really getting on our buses that we do have to go in and investigate?
Well, it's, it's probably not, at this point, any of the investigations we have had. We have had problems with kids on buses occasionally, and this would help us bring a parent in and say, yes, Johnny actually did that. But if there's an accident or anything like that, then we would have additional video backup to that, and these would be saved in a manner in which they can be used in court.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask you was the funding for this. Proposition 1B, is this money in Proposition 1B specifically for surveillance and GPS on buses, or is this money that's out there in transit center and development or anything else? Is this channeled specifically for this?
It's specifically for security use.
Thank you, Richard.
Any other questions on the consent calendar? Nope, thanks, Richard. Okay, seeing no one's light come on, I would accept a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent. Yeah, it's going to be a tough night. The consent calendar, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Next, we have an appointment to the Public Safety Commission for one term expiring in Bob, that's yours, isn't it? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Judith Taggart to the open position on the city's Public Safety Committee or Commission.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And is there any discussion? Judith, are you here? No.
She's not here. She apologized. She was trying to make it, but had a previous appointment.
Okado. Just wanted to give her a chance if she was here. Is any discussion from the council? Okay, could we vote on that, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
If I may, as we did in the past, if we could have the city clerk or the city send out a letter of appreciation to the other applicant for their application as well, I think that's appropriate.
And informing them of the current available openings as well, because I believe there are two or three others that are open at large positions.
Yeah.
Okay, it's time for true confessions. None of you can laugh if you're my friends. On, well, now that goes. On October 10th, I read my report in pursuit of the Public Health and Safety Code 33130, and then later I read it. It's obvious that the Boy Scout in me can't tell north from south. So I hereby correct my prior letter to 118 North I Street rather than 118 South I Street. Number two, at the last council meeting, I was somewhat remiss in one thing, and I didn't talk about it, so now I'm going to, going to make up for it. At our last council meeting, we had the Charter of Excellence brochures available in the lobby. If you didn't get one, please get one. This was a great deal of effort on behalf of our staff to carry out an idea brought forward by the Single Purpose Committee, and they've done a great job. I enjoyed reading it. I think it gives good direction to the city, and it helps all of us out there understand what our expectations should be from our city staff. So I just wanted to say it was great. And I attended the Northern Santa Barbara County Economic Forecast along with Councilmember Costa at some city expense, but I actually don't know what it was. It wasn't large. Any other requests and announcements at this time? Councilmember Costa.
Ms. Martin, how do I know?
Sorry. Councilmember Martin.
I would like to make an agenda item request, and that is that the city staff provides a report or a presentation on the status of all the loans that we have presently with LH CDC and what, and also with the corresponding liabilities to the city. So that's my agenda item request, and I will need a second and a third for that.
I'll second that.
I'll third that, that was what I was going to state. However, I would like to expand that if possible. I think that's going to be the core of the information, but really, any information that we're discussing that can be made public should be included in that information as well. I would appreciate it.
I think we need to be more specific if we want other particular public information. At this point in time, I'm asking for a status report on all the outstanding loans that we have with LH CDC and the potential liabilities to the city when LH CDC dissolves, as to how much money is there. If there is other information that we need to, I think we need to be very specific so we make sure that the staff reports it. So my question to you, Councilmember Costa, can you be more specific in your request?
Not at the moment, so I'll continue with your motion, and if I feel that there could be more information, I'd have to request it at a later date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you, and one of the other things that I think was mentioned in public comment, and I think we know the answer to it, but I think we can share with the public, would be the position of the city and the other various notes with regard to each of these?
Right, and I think that falls in the liability, whether we're first, second, or third, right? I mean, that has to do strictly with the liabilities as well, so that needs to be reported.
And the amounts of the other loans that are outstanding?
Yes. And, and maybe we need to put a deadline to this, perhaps next council meeting, December Is that the next council meeting, December 6, I believe?
Yes. City Administrator?
So I would like to add that to the December 6 agenda.
For the next council meeting, that would mean that the staff report would be ready to go. Do you expect it on the 11th-day agenda notice, or can it go just prior to the meeting on the agenda, the regular agenda that gets distributed Wednesday prior to the council meeting?
Would you get it ready for the Wednesday before the council meeting?
I think that's reasonable.
So that would be fine.
And then I just wanted to ask for clarification. All outstanding loans, is that CDBG, RDA, all outstanding loans?
All, all outstanding loans.
Yes, the standing. Loans and status was what I recorded.
I didn't hear what you.
My apologies, I just wanted to confirm that I heard it correctly, that she requested not just the amount of outstanding loans, but the standings of those loans as well.
Yes, I have that, absolutely. Okay, any other council requests and announcements at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Item number seven, the City of Lompoc Park and Pool Maintenance Assessment District Statement for Period July 1, 2010 to June 30, 2011. Dan McCaffrey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, those in our audience tonight, and those viewing from home. On October 27th of this year, the Oversight Committee met and reviewed the Assessment District Statement for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011. The minutes of that report are Attachment A in your staff report, and they reflect the activity and the actions of that meeting. It is a recommendation that council review, receive, and file the City of Lompoc Parks and Pool Maintenance Assessment District Statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011. This concludes my report. I am available for questions, as is Management Services Director Brad Wilke. Thank you.
Council questions at this time before I take public testimony? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Don't go away. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment on this item, and we'll come back to council discussion. Dan, just because some people may not be familiar with this, could you just briefly discuss what the function of this report is?
Absolutely. Each year, there is a proposed budget that is put out, and it is taken before the council and reviewed. In that budget basically reflects the activities or actions of the city as it relates to activities in the parks and recreation area. Each year, there is an assessment levied upon all residents or properties in the, in the city, and those revenues are brought forth and makes these actions, takes the actions of that mission and go forward. The Oversight Committee then comes forward every year, they sit down and review the budget and the activity. Once upon review, and of course, our Fiscal Management Services Director Brad Wilke puts a comprehensive document together, and at that time, it is reviewed and discussed, and then at the conclusion of that, there is either action to further study or to bring it to council for the end-of-the-year consideration for your review and, of course, for filing.
Okay, so basically, this is the Oversight Board that makes sure that we spent the money that we took from the taxpayers the way we said we were going to spend it?
Pretty much in a nutshell, sir.
And did they have any discrepancies that I didn't see in this report?
There were none. Actually, there was, there were compliments.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing nobody, oop. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just wanted to state that in a few meetings past, I was concerned about the sunset of the assessment, and I just wanted to let the members of the public and the council know that I've spoken to Mr. Wilke about this, and he will be submitting a memo to council in regards to that information, and that this is separate to that topic, but we will be discussing that at a later date, I believe. But I commend you for this, and thank you for filing that.
And I would take a motion, please.
Move to accept the report.
Second.
And a second. And is there any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we're moving to item eight, the City of Lompoc Annex of the Santa Barbara County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Battalion Chief, no, Fire Battalion Chief, Mark Bray.
Mr. Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm a mayor, councilmembers.
You know what, this is just wrong. Chief, come on down. Yeah, the temp. I think you should present your new battalion chief, introduce him to the city.
Okay, Mayor and councilmember, this is Mark Bray is one of our new battalion chiefs, and the other one is Mark Clayton.
You could whip up a little bio.
They were, I wasn't expecting this, but officially promoted November 5th is when the official date started, I believe. Mark has worked for the city for twenty years now?
Twenty years.
Twenty. Like I said, I wasn't prepared.
I know, I just thought you could get a shot in. Thank you. Now, Mark, you get three minutes to tell us how happy you are before you start on the real work.
I get three minutes for?
You get three minutes to tell us how happy you are being battalion commander.
Oh, I'm going to need more time than that. Okay, I'm here to speak on, as I said, the 2011 City of Lompoc Annex of the Santa Barbara County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Plan. Our recommendation is that the city council receive this report and information from the staff. That is adopted, adopt the proposed 2011 City of Lompoc Annex of the Santa Barbara County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 and Adopt Resolution 575311. Some background discussion, Federal Emergency Management Agency requires local governments to provide and maintain a hazard mitigation plan. The Santa Barbara County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan is a comprehensive document that evaluates natural disaster impacts on the public and local government, identifies county and city resources and capabilities to respond to the impacts, and processes mitigation actions, or projects designed to reduce the impacts of natural disaster on public and local government throughout the city and county. The plan identifies potential hazards that could impact city and assist emergency management staff with response planning, exercise development, public education awareness programs, and other... other emergency management functions. The current plan, excuse me, the current plan for Santa Barbara County was approved in 2005 and is due for renewal. Excuse me. To create a new plan, particularly with the volume of technical information contained, the Office of Emergency Management obtained a $77,633 hazard mitigation grant to use services of a professional firm. The annexes are submitted to CALIMA and FEMA for review, approval, and inclusion to the multi-jurisdictional plan. Local governments without an approved plan will not be eligible to receive post-hazard disaster mitigation grant program, project grants. Low-interest, small-business loans are also at risk without an approved and adopted hazard mitigation plan. Fiscal impact is a future FEMA funding for pre-disaster and post-disaster projects that are also dependent on the adoption of this plan. In summary, this plan, when reviewed by FEMA and OES, may require changes and/or modifications that would be brought back to council for review and final approval.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your presentation. I think that this is, actually, it's thick, but it was quite interesting. I liked looking at the data here, and I think that this was wonderful. My one question was, and I'm not sure if you have this information or not, and it's funny, because I've asked this, I think, for the previous three meetings, was the Public Safety Commission involved?
I'm new to this position. I don't know. I don't have that information. I kind of came in at the tail end of all this.
If we can have our temp come forward.
No, the Public Safety Commission wasn't involved at all.
No, I understand that this is a technical document, and a lot of what they are looking at is definitely things that may be out of their purview. And although I do understand that wholly, I do feel that at least at some level, at some point, this should have at least gone to them before it came to us, or had them involved at some point. And the reason I say that is because I believe that that commission is grossly underutilized, and I think that this would be a perfect opportunity to get their input. That's what they're there for, you know, boots on the ground, public opinion sort of stuff. And again, at the very least, presented this to them, got their nod, and then, you know, we knew that they would give the nod and then have it be given to us. So, I think that's unfortunate. My request would be for staff to please provide a copy of this to every Public Safety Commissioner, if possible.
I can say we could do that. The one reason they weren't involved in this, because of the technical expertise that was required, because I attended some of the meetings, and the other city and county employees that did this, that's all they deal with. They were sitting there rattling off disasters that happened 10 years ago and gave us the case numbers.
Understood, and I think that definitely at that level, we need that expertise. I guess my hope would have been that, just as we did with the park and pool assessment, that went to that group first before it came to council. This could have gone to the Public Safety Commission for review or input or anything, you know, requests or suggestion to council. I would have appreciated getting them involved in the process in any way that we can, so... But I do value that, and thank you for that response. If we can get them a copy of this, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
And one of the other problems, not problems, but one of the other things, this was brought before the council, before it's approved by CALIMA and FEMA, and that's due to the Engineering Department has a grant that they have to submit, and it has to be approved by the city for them to even submit the grant, which is due November 22nd.
A crisis created by others on our behalf. Okay, Councilmember Lingle?
One quick question. Are these new shoulder patches you have in your uniforms? They look different. They are.
Yes, they are.
How long have we had those?
About three months.
Oh, they look good.
It's just for the chief officers with the black uniforms.
Oh, but they are...
We still have the colorful ones on the engine company personnel.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, Battalion Chief Bray there. On page 13 of 59, you're not listed as a contact there. List, somebody you replaced, I think.
We'll look into that.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time? Seeing no lights, we would open this for public comment. Chief, do you want to comment again? He stood up, but he ran. Okay. Anyone out there that would like to talk on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and come back to the council. Is there any other discussion on this item? No? Okay, I'd love to have a motion. Councilmember Lingle?
I move that the city, or the council, will receive this report and accept it.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0 with no abstentions. Do we have any written communications? Now you're up. We're at for that last oral communication. This is your very last chance to come in. Yeah, good. Come on down.
Mayor Lynn, councilmembers, staff, attendees, I just want to take a moment to...
Name?
Oh, Bob Schrum, and I live over on Sheffield. I just wanted to take a moment to observe, make an observation. At one time, we had two grocery stores on the south side of town. Bonds brought out, Williams Brothers, and was soon to close the store that I believe is between E and F on Ocean. And not long here, we just had the other store close. So, we find ourselves with grocery stores over on the north and west side of town, but there's nothing on the south and east side of town. And so, I know the difficulties of trying to direct commerce in any particular direction, and that might be far out of your capabilities, but if you see the opportunity to stimulate some, somebody to provide a grocery store capability on the south and east side of town, a lot of residents of Lompoc would be very happy.
Absolutely, and on the economic development side, we are working on that, no question. But if I told you everything I know, you know what I'd have to do, so we can't. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak now? Last chance? Okay, so we'll close the final oral communication, and we'll come back for council redevelopment agency requests, comments, and meeting reports. Let's just start from one side. Councilmember Martin. I'll raise it.
Don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. As you reported earlier, I did attend the Economic Development Forum at a small cost to the city. I do want to mention that there's an event tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Red Zone. I feel like half of us in this room are probably already going to be there because we are trying to raise $800 in bail per person for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. I feel very grateful that I was able to raise my $800 bail, which was very exciting. So, again, 11 to 1 tomorrow at the Red Zone to come support its great cause, one of the many in the city of Lompoc. One thing that I, of course, there was other meetings I attended, but one thing I wanted to speak about with council briefly is regarding the League of California Cities Policy Committee openings. So, right now is the time of year. You probably got an email from Helene Schneider, who I believe is the mayor of Santa Barbara, who is now the president for the Channel Counties League of California Cities Group, and I was informed that there was some availability on the Community Services Committee, as well as the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee. As some of you may already know, I've taken quite a big interest in League of California Cities, and I was interested in applying for a position on the policy committee. There are three, excuse me, four meetings a year. One is already budgeted because that would be the annual conference. The other three would be at a cost of approximately $1,962. They're in Ontario. One meeting's in Ontario, two meetings are in Sacramento, and of course, that's an approximate. I'm going to try to figure out some cost savings, the one in Ontario. Of course, there's no reason for me to need to stay overnight. That's only a few hours away, things like that. So, about, yeah, our administrative assistant came up with a number of $1,962 for me to attend those three meetings if I was given approval by the council. I did want to apply for the Revenue and Taxation Committee, but unfortunately, that one gets staffed pretty quickly, and there are quite a few folks who have been on there and take precedent for those positions, so I may have to wait on that. So, this year, I was interested in the Community Services Committee. That focuses on park, state parks, libraries, human services, and a lot of it, again, comes back to, you know, control, municipal control and local control of things, and that's, of course, what the league always stands for. So, for me, the way that I look at it, I understand it's a cost. I know that we have that amount of money budgeted. I've been told by staff, so I would be able to do that. And then one point I wanted to make is I don't believe that city politics occur in a vacuum. I think we need to be very aware of what's happening on the county, state, and federal level, and this is just one avenue to do that. So, I wanted to see if council would allow me to do that. If not, that's okay too, but I would like to be part of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the synergies that I guess could be marketed here is the Prisma State Park. So, how is that fitting into this committee? Just to ask a question, because the question that really needs to be answered here is, is it going to impact the city by you being there? Is it going to impact or potentially impact the city in a beneficial way, meaning lobbying for our, for our Prisma, because that's the bottom line? I mean, are you going to, can you try to get us some money for the state parks that are nearby or that kind of thing? Is that a channel?
Well, really quickly about the state parks, there are, they have, the state has slated 70 for closure. I do not believe that Prisma is currently on that list, but they do have a trigger list of additional cuts that could be made, and so that's something that's always on the table. So, fortunately for us, it looks like in the short term, it's going to remain open, although, again, it's questionable in the long term. And as far as lobbying goes, I do think that part of that is having a voice, and that means lobbying, not necessarily for just the finances of getting grant monies or whatnot in the city of Lompoc, but being a representative, knowing what our community needs, and being able to express that at a larger forum. So, just representing our area, specifically Lompoc, and our interest in attempt to, you know, best provide the information to the governor as an organization as far as individual bills are concerned. So, it's, you know, it's not as far as getting monies necessarily, although I guess it could be in a general sense, but not specifically for Lompoc.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Costa, I agree with you that politics does not happen in a vacuum, and several years ago, when Mike Samenski was on this commission, he was also a member of the Executive Committee for NCPA. The city did extend extra money for him to participate in these meetings, and it did bring a lot of advantages to the city of Lompoc. Not, well, yes, advantages. He was really out there looking out not only for the city of Lompoc, which he was, but also other local municipalities that had power. So, I agree with you. I think it'd be probably well worth the $1,900 or so for you to be a member of that committee, so I'd be supporting you.
Councilmember Martin?
I have another question, and perhaps this is for the city administrator. Councilmember Costa mentioned that these monies was budgeted. What other use these monies may have had instead of the disappointment?
Councilmember Martin, it would be the monies budgeted under the Meetings line item, as well as travel, and there are adequate funds budgeted for this purpose.
But is it travel for city council, or is it under a bigger umbrella?
No, it's city council.
It's city council, specifically city council.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your turn.
I'm not going to be traveling, so I support it.
I think it's great that you want to volunteer to do it, and after what you accomplished for us, going to Fresno and sleeping at your friend's house, I'm all for it, so, yeah. Everybody's got a nod. I think that's a 5-0 nod. And do we need a formal action, city administrator?
No, consensus.
So, we have consensus. Your turn.
The one thing I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to go ahead, and I mean, Parks and Rec has already left, but I wanted to go ahead and really tip my hat to the Beatty Park Flagpole Committee with the job that they did up at Beatty Park. It was on November 5th. It was very commemorative, and if you have not seen it, it's worth driving up Olive as long as they're not slurry sealing it and taking a good look at the new flagpole up there on the hill.
Councilmember Lingle?
Nothing to report.
The only other thing I'd like to report is, on behalf of the city, I attended two events at Vandenberg Air Force Days, and Vandenberg Air Force Day, Base, I'm telling you it's a tough tongue day, on Veterans Day. The first one was the Run to Remember, and this was a project that was started by the parents of a local veteran who was killed, and they have a plastic card for the 6,248 veterans of the current anti-terror conflicts. And the goal was to have each card go around the track for a mile, so you'd check out a card and walk or run. And I went to the opening ceremony, got lost in the fog back when, but this was the clothing ceremony, and they actually went 13,000 miles. So, every card went two miles, and some of them went more, and individuals could request the card of someone they knew. And so, that was pretty amazing, first thing in the morning. And then the other one was, at the end of the day, and most of you saw it in the paper, the dedication of California Boulevard for Airman Johnson, who was an explosive ordinance technician who was killed in Afghanistan. And what you didn't maybe see was an entire auditorium full of people, both from the demolition community, one, his direct superior, who had actually been transferred somewhere else, came back, and the speeches that were made with regard to Airman Johnson were incredible. He was an amazing person, so I'm sad that we don't have him with us anymore, but like people that leave us, we have a little piece of him, and if you were there, now you have a piece of him too. Those were great events, and the mayor, being the mayor, has its privileges because you get to go to those. It was great. So, any other announcements? Nope, then we are adjourned? No, we're not. We're recessed back to closed session. And if you want to hear more, stick around. We'll be back in a while. It's now 10:30, and we're back from our closed session, and we still have no reportable action, but we had a lot of conversation, and we've given instructions to the city attorney and the city administrator with regard to our favorite subject, LH CDC, and our city administrator, who's chewing furiously, has one announcement.
Mr. Mayor and council, just want to announce that the city and the county will be conducting a test drill of the Reverse 9/11 Emergency System during the Public Health Emergency Response Drill this Thursday morning from 8:00 to noon, and the drill exercise involves the Lompoc Water Division simulating a water incident.
And we are now adjourned to the Council Redevelopment Agency meeting of December 6th at 7:00 p.m. No, it'll be 6:00. We'll have a closed session, but we'll see you then.